Mr. Jordan, please.
I pledge the reasons to defy the United States of America, to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, first.
We have the acceptance of the minutes from the October 23rd, 2019 meeting.
I'll move the commission to accept the minutes as presented, and I'll second.
We have an order confirming and ratifying the fiduciary supervisors' report of claims and settlement reports on the following estates: Asher, Grimm, Parsons, Magna, Snyder, Hando, Morgan, Alcasis, Gooch, Voel, Plants, Quarterman, Goldson, Lamb, Hicksonbaugh, Henderson, Ray, Rose, Riley, Sago, Butcher, Non, Willis, Vasakia, Clint, Clint Netz, Brown, Hawn, Little, Lampkin, Poundstone, Richter, Cornwell, Jenkins, Massett, Falks, Weekly, Collins, Cunningham, Cunningham, Carpus, Brown, Toothman, Hughes, Kinsel, Clevenger, Hayes, Heinemann, Kester, Wilson, Aquino, Roat, Boyce, Villers, Talarico, Kennedy, McCoombs, Demoss, Zenny, Elliott, Campbell, Shears, Cleveland, Haney, Talkington, Payne, Parks, Brand, Miller, Police, Parker, Kizner, McDefitt, Anseline, Watson, Newsom, Covert, Patterson, and Endicott. And this requires the signature of the commission as well as the clerk, and I apologize to anyone whose name I butcher.
Any objections, please tell them.
Seeing no objections, I'll move the commission to sign the order.
And I'll second.
We have a resolution for the Marion County Commission to authorize Belinda Biafor, Assistant Director of the Marion County Development Office, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with the West Virginia Development Office to receive and administer funds pursuant to the provisions of the fiscal year 2019 Local Economic Development Grant Program, and be acting president and sign this.
I'll move the action president to sign the resolution.
I'll second.
The Marion County Clerk is submitting an order to consolidate Precinct 122, Montana Mines Community Building, into Precinct 121, Eastdale Elementary School.
We have received no objections.
That works great. We've consolidated one more, and our goal is 57. I disagree with it right there. That's my goal there.
That might be a better way of saying it. For your hard work, Tom. All right, that's the crew. Everybody's getting involved, so it's good really, please.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work you're putting in as well. I'll move the commission to sign the order approving the consolidation.
And I'll second.
We have a request for funds from the Marion County Juvenile Drug Court. Last week, or at our last meeting, Jessica Bennett presented us with information about this program and requested some funding to help get it going. Obviously, at that meeting, we could not take any action, so it is on our agenda today for approval for some funding for that program.
Yes, I'm going to move the commission to allocate the $1,000 to Marion County Juvenile Drug Court.
And I'll second.
We have, for the record, a request for reimbursement from the West Virginia Division of Justice and Community Services to cover expenditures from September 2019. This is our Community Corrections Grant for Day Report, and the amount of $7,347.69. Again, that's for the record. We have a request for funds from the West Virginia Route 2 I-68 Authority. Phil Mason was here. He's also here again today. Spoke at our last meeting regarding that authority and their activities, and also requested funding to help them move forward with their plan.
It's been a long-term project. It will continue to probably be a long-term project, but we need to stay on it to keep it alive. It will bring economic development to this area when it's completed. I agree with you, Phil. It may not be in our lifetime, but it would certainly be in the children's lifetime. So I'll move this commission to allocate $3,000 for the Route 2 I-68 Authority.
And I'll second. Thank you for your hard work. Next, Hank.
Also for last week, we have a request for funds from the Rising Stars After School Program. Sharon was here at our last meeting and spoke about the Rising Stars After School Program and requested funding to keep that program going as well.
Yes, I'll move the commission to allocate that $1,000 to the Rising Star After School Program.
And I'll second.
We have a presentation of award to the commission from Jackie Alden, Regional Manager, Northern West Virginia Make-A-Wish Foundation.
What is it, Northern West Virginia? What is it?
How's everybody doing? I haven't been here in a while. It's good to see you all again. Lots have changed. I'm married. I'm a new mom. Thank you. So everything is going great. I am so excited to introduce you guys to our new regional coordinator. This is Vanessa, and she is kind of taking my place as far as the walk, because you guys used to sponsor our big Walk for Wishes, which is fantastic. So we are here because you helped fund an entire wish this past year. So we want to present to you your 2019 Wishmaker Award. This is actually for the Marion County Commission, which is great. So thank you all so much. We appreciate, yeah. If you don't mind, that's great. This is great. Yeah. Can I get a copy of this? Okay, I'll get a copy of this. The wish come true for Xavier. He is from Montana Mines, West Virginia. He's six years old, has muscular dystrophy, and his wish was, of course, to go to Disney World. It's actually our number-one request. Go figure. Everybody loves Mickey. Some of his favorite parts were meeting Mickey and his friends riding the rides, especially Space Mountain. He loved that. He watched the fireworks, and he even got to see Tinker Bell fly over the castle, which is so cool. And he also loved meeting Mike and Sully. Those are his favorite characters, and he loves the movie Monsters, Inc. Does everybody know Monsters, Inc.? Obviously. He loved that. And Xavier's wish came true for one reason. It's very simple, because of you. And we can't thank you enough. It's a very big honor. His parents and his entire family were able to forget everything that he goes through just for a whole week. And when we grant a Disney wish, it's not just Disney. We send them for seven days, six nights, to Orlando. They get to go to the Walt Disney Parks, but they also get to go to Universal and SeaWorld for a day. And they also get to stay at a wonderful village called Give Kids the World, and that's where all of our wish families stay, and they have their own villa. And the only stress that they had to worry about was what ice cream flavor to get. They have an ice cream parlor. I think it's open from like 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. It's amazing. It's so cool. So thank you so much for all of your help. And with that, we hope that you can continue and grant another wish in 2020. In fact, currently, we have seven pending wishes in Marion County and the surrounding area. Last year, we granted 67 wishes in all of our entire Northern West Virginia territory, and 20, 20 of those, which is almost half, came from this area. I did the research last night, and I was shocked. I couldn't believe how many kids are just right here. So what y'all did was provide an opportunity of a lifetime for a family going through so much, literally going through heck and back. So we can't thank you enough. We love your hearts. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
It is a wonderful organization that you have, and not only the commission, but a lot of individuals in the county get the opportunity to donate, make those wishes come true. And everyone who does participate in that certainly gets a lot of benefit out of it. And I encourage everyone, if they can, to make that donation.
Yep, absolutely. And we appreciate that. Hopefully, we'll see you next year.
Good evening.
I'm late, thank you.
Chris, next.
We have the opening of bids for law enforcement radios. I believe we have three. Sorry, I couldn't tell from the envelope.
Sheriff, if you would, while we're opening these bids, could you give us a brief overview of what they're for?
Recently, we were awarded a $30,000 grant to upgrade our mobile radios once in a while. Did y'all know several months ago we purchased the new portables? And this will just supplement those and also work well with the new system we put in the service system. We're hoping to maybe get 15 new radios for the cruisers, depending on the bids that you're operating now. It's all just a continued effort to keep not only the citizens safe, but the deputies who are doing their job, providing them with better communications.
And what was the amount of the radios?
The grant was for $30,000.
And what was the number of radios?
We were hoping for 15, depending on the bids. They run anywhere between $2,000 and $3,000.
Okay, this is the first bid. Looks like they bid it as an individual unit, $26.50. They don't have a unit. They just give an individual, $26.50 a unit. I guess that's how they're all going to go. $39,750 for 15. And that is from Bear Communications. $26.50 each.
Let's say whether that's included in the installation. The prices.
Tell you here. This is also a single unit. Has to include radio, mounting bracket, power cables, microphones, hangers, two-year warranty.
We'll have to check.
I was going to say, we'll recommend that after they read the bids, that they refer to us to make sure.
Yeah, we'll refer back to you. That way, you can make sure it's apples to apples on everything, and it's everything that you wished and did put into the quote.
Can't hear it said. The bid would be for individual units. Price won't be established for one complete unit.
Second bidder, bid is $4,200 per unit. Company named DC Computers.
Did you say DC or?
Uh, DC. Third bid. $2,998.95 each. Richard Kevin Brost. Assuming that's the name of the company. Communication, or Command Communications Company.
One with Bear, Bear Communications.
Did you get that amount, Tom?
$2,998.95.
Yes, sir.
After that, the bid would be?
Yeah, I'll move this one down.
November 20th is when they'll announce.
Yeah. Well, I'll move that we refer these bids back to the sheriff and their staff to review, and then we'll announce the award of bid winners on the November 20th meeting, our next meeting.
And I'll second. They signed up to speak?
Yes. First is Kim Gwen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Now, my name's Kim Gwen, and I live on Saberton Avenue. Today, I'm here in reference to Senate Bill 496 that was introduced to you for February 17, 2018, and the care and management of cats and feral cat colonies. I'm here today over neighbors being allowed to create colonies of cats and creating nuisance to the neighbors. Neighborhood and Animal Control Officer Phil wants to put a stop to this. This is an ongoing problem. The Senate Bill 496 was introduced February 7, 2018, but never passed. And I have the laws here, which are great laws, but no one can seem to do anything about this. I've owned this home for 30 years, and I'm being forced out because of what's allowed, what people's allowing the neighbors do. We have three people feeding cats. I personally have took out 80 cats. The neighbor that sold his house because of this ongoing problem, he took out probably 120 cats. And the other neighbor has quit trapping them because there's so many cats, we can't keep up. And I pay $8,000 a year in taxes, and nobody's doing anything to protect our family's rights or our home. And I just would like to know where you stand with this bill that was introduced in 2018? Because the laws are great. It makes the people doing this responsible and held accountable for their actions and what they're doing to other people in the neighborhood, but I'm told it hasn't passed yet. And I'd like to know where we're at with that.
Well, I would probably offer a... I'm not sure on Bill 496. I'm unfamiliar with it. I don't know who introduced it or if it's wanted to be reintroduced into this year's legislation. But to ask you a question, have you contacted Animal Control?
Yeah, they don't call back, nor do they comment. I understand that our taxes pay for that service, and nothing's being done. The stench is so bad in our neighborhood that I'm actually embarrassed for anyone to come to my house because the cats go to the bathroom and soil my yard. And I'm refusing to trap them anymore. I'm forced now to sell.
What's the address at Saberton Avenue?
95.
Let us contact on Animal Control and see what we can do. You say you have three other neighbors, perhaps already contacted us now?
The cats that we have caught have been so diseased from, I guess, breeding with brothers and sisters, I'm told. I don't know. I'm not... I don't have the expertise in that area. But they're diseased. They're sick. They're deformed. And I'm sure that these people aren't giving these cats shots or anything because they can't afford, you know... I mean, they just couldn't afford that. But, you know, it's a shame that you're forced out of your house because there's no laws in effect because of these issues.
Let us give you your information. To Chris, we'll contact Animal Control and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
If you're going up the hill off of 19, is it on top of the hill make a left? Is it Saberton?
It's down in Melville, yeah.
I know a brother. You go up the first one, and you make it around the left.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any laws at all with these colonies of cats?
I think in the state of West Virginia, they're considered non-domesticated animals. As my understanding, now, I don't know. Something could have changed, but that's always been my understanding. So I think if you call Animal Control, they'll bring you a trap, try to help you. They will take them if you catch them, but since they're non-domesticated animals, they don't respond as they would a dog or some other type of incident. So, and again, that's following... That's as I understand it. I'm not defending or saying that's right. I'm just saying that that's what... I understand the law to be here.
Can you tell me the law with people doing that? Is there any law passed against people creating this kind of nuisance? Because there's a nuisance law in Marion County. I just wonder why the cat team included in that? The dogs can't even bark. So why would the cats be allowed to come into your yard and use the bathroom? It just doesn't make sense to me. But do you know of any law?
Well, I know that we have a leash law in Marion County that, like I said, is specific to dogs. They do apply to noise ordinance as well. But as far as cats, I don't believe that we have anything on our books that address, you know, the feline species as a whole to give Animal Control or law enforcement or anybody really ability to control that. Now, as far as neighbors feeding them, I don't know about that one. I'm not sure how you could legislate something like that. But I can certainly call Willabeth and TJ and have a conversation with them. I know that just about all they'll do for cats is, you know, they'll bring you traps and, you know, help take them away if you're able to catch them. But to my understanding, that's about all that they do, unfortunately.
So like, there is a bill here that says... This is Bill 1920A3 about the owners obtaining and possessing dogs or cats that the state of West Virginia has the dog and cat probably vaccinated again rabies with a vaccination, producing immunity in three years. So they have to have this. The law says that you have to have your animals vaccinated for rabies. Is that introduced, or is that a law?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the... Well, that was part of Senate Bill 496. Yeah, that is not law. But like Rick mentioned, if they're stray and no one is actually claiming ownership of them, there would be no one to be held accountable.
But when you feed them, you are claiming ownership, according to the guy downstairs. I just have a trailer park, and a woman tried to start this in our trailer park, and I immediately evicted her, and he told us, "When you literally start feeding them water, and then you are claiming ownership." That's what these people are doing. They're claiming ownership of these cats because the minute they start feeding them water, they're saying, "That's mine."
Well, I'll tell you what. Let me get your phone number, and let's continue this conversation with proper officials because I think we're probably getting into hypotheticals and guessing things. So you can give it to me now or you can give it with me after the meeting. Okay.
Kim Gwen.
Got you.
Thank you.
Yep. Tim Radford?
Good morning, Jim. Good morning. My name's Tim Radford. I live on 606 River Run Road. It's out on the Marion-Taylor County line. We have low water and two tenths of a mile from my house is the end of the city water line. I was trying to see if there's any kind of grants or assistance of any kind that I could get to get water continued on down that road. There's 12 houses below me... Well, there's 12 houses altogether that would be interested in water. My well goes... If I use it very often, if I wash more than one load of clothes a day or something, it turns cloudy. It used to be good, but it's... I don't know. It's the fact that it's been so dry this summer or what, but we've been fighting it forever. I live up on a hill, and my well is 200 foot deep. It just doesn't produce enough water. And we were having Thanksgiving dinner there. We had to cancel that. We're going to go to Ohio to my daughter's house. Can't have grandkids. And I'm sure there's other people with the same situation. They just don't have enough water. It would also increase the value of our homes, lower the price of our fire insurance and everything. And I was just wondering if there's any kind of assistance I could give on that.
Is that Tri-County, did you say?
I believe that's...
It's the City of Fairmont's water line that you're on. So, yeah, and I think the way that would work is that the Public Service District of Tri-County would probably apply for a rate increase. And I think we spoke about that. And then if they pass that, they do the extension. But like I said, that's just... That would be something we would need to take a look at and see.
Yeah, we'd probably contact Tri-County Water, and they would take it to the PSC and that rate increase, they'd do an estimate of the cost, and that increase would be divided among all the existing members of the Tri-County Water Association. If you would stay over after the meeting, we'll get you that information so you can get the ball rolling. I don't know that it'll be an immediate solution.
No, I don't think it'd be on the list.
But the first step is always... A long journey always starts with the first step. So I'd be glad to help you with that.
Okay, thank you.
We also have Frank Jordan.
Who's that? Thank you, commissioners. Because you guys know what we do, I wanted to let you know that the Marion County Family Resource Network is working with the Board of Education, the Public Library, NASA, and Pier Park to bring a hands-on children's museum for science and exploration. And we've looked at a couple of locations, not had any luck, but we've already written a grant from Toyota for $200,000 to begin that process. And I just want to keep you guys aware and in the loop of what we're doing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the job you do.
Thank you.
And lastly, we have Eddie Snodgrass.
Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here this morning. I'm coming here as a downtown business owner. I've been involved with Adams Off Supply for more than 40 years and have been a part of the business in downtown one way or form throughout those years. Past several years, I've been the owner. My partner Harvey Habichuk and I have been together for 40-some years, and I bought the business from him. Times are getting tougher in downtown Fairmont. I've had some conversations with some of the folks here with the county commission. The response has been great that I've gotten. I was encouraged to speak to some of the department heads, which I'm currently in the process of doing. I'm getting a good response from those folks as well. It has increasingly been tougher to deal with the box stores that are out there. There's a place called Amazon, they're basically where, they're pretty hard to deal with, and they put several folks out of business, as you watch the news every day. I'm not here to compete with them, I'm not here to close any Staples, Office Max stores or any of that kind of deal, but we are doing our best to promote the business. We are pretty close to competing with the box stores, a lot of folks aren't aware of that. Our wholesalers do a wonderful job promoting business to us that we can sell to the end user for the best dollar that we can. There are a half a dozen employees across the street. They all live here, they all pay taxes here. I've got a young lady who's been with us for more than 30 years, Laura, and the others have been there at least a half a dozen years on the average. So, so I'm here just to let folks know that we could use some support, especially when there's a building 30 yards across the street from us and the courthouse, so that's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think as a business owner myself here, I've been here 45-plus years. I understand how difficult it is at times to compete with some of these places like Amazon, and we are in the business of selling service as well as just products, and service does sell, and it is wonderful to, for us to take consideration of doing business with all local businesses here, it's very important. In fact, we emphasize this commission that we first buy, look to buy in Marion County, in the surrounding counties, we can't get here, and then at least in the state. Now, I can tell you that doesn't always happen, because there's a lot of times that we can't get all the materials here locally, but if it can at all be done, you know, is my, certainly my recommendation, that we shop locally. And because the bottom line is the individuals here paying the fees, the business owners paying the taxes, and those individuals living here paying the taxes. It's, certainly would be a great idea, those supporting our community to do business with and supporting this government. So I agree with you 100%. We should all try to buy locally and support the local business.
Honey, would you give me two minutes?
Yes.
We did develop a pledge of reconciliation to support downtown businesses in Fairmont, as well as many of you know, because we think that there is a time when we need to say, we really will support downtown businesses. And I know that after I went and apologized to Raymond's Exxon for not having bought gas, even though, you know, I have an office downstairs, and seven people told me the next day, or the next two days, that they went to Raymond's for the first time also. So by signing this pledge for reconciliation, we're saying that at least for six weeks, from November the 13th through December the 24th, we will shop, dine, utilize services, visit facilities in downtown Fairmont. And I have a list of the possibilities of places you can go. I have a list of all the businesses and services that are downtown Fairmont, that you're welcome to do that, because in all of my research, from 1958 on, there's never been a real effort over a continual period of time to say, let's shop downtown Fairmont. The only time we make it, it's a Shop Small Business Day, the last Saturday of November. And last year, in the newspapers, one of the merchants said, that was our best day ever. I'm saying, let's make that best day ever for six weeks, and then offer the pledge for reconciliation to say, let's go on beyond that, see what happens next year. At the same time, this pledge for reconciliation says, we support the Friendship Room as a way of helping the people of Fairmont get needed services. We support the downtown business merchants as a way of helping them. And when I apologized to Eddie also, because I bought all my supplies, not from the company that he sent, I said, I would, I need to shop downtown Fairmont with him, and he told me, if you have any order over $75, he'll give it to you the next day, regardless of what it is that you need. Now, that is better than Amazon. So I think that's all the more reason, excuse me, I gotta get off my preaching platform, that's all the more reason we need to shop downtown Fairmont, because if we make it seriously, you know, because the county commission does everything they can do, the city does everything that they can do to make downtown Fairmont vital, but unless we make that personal commitment, it's just talk only. And I'm about doing more than just talk. Amen.
The only thing we can say is, if you haven't stopped, you haven't shopped.
I love it, I love it.
Thank you.
That's a great motto, that's a great motto.
That's mine, can't have it.
I love it.
Thank you all for coming. Next meeting is at November 23rd, 10 o'clock?
And that was within my two minutes, too.